Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the January 8th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting. Charlie, our chair is not here today, so I'm the vice chair and will be running the meeting. If you have any complaints, raise your hand and tell me, because I don't do this very often. Recommendations of the Planning Commission on certain items from this agenda will be considered by the Board of Commissioners at the regular meeting on January 16th, 2024, at 10:30 a.m. The Planning Commission utilizes speaker request forms, which are available in the commission chambers during the meeting, and they're in the back of the room. If you are the applicant or the applicant's agent, you do not have to fill out one of these forms. Go ahead with roll call. Charlie is the only one missing today. And then approval of the December 11th minutes. If you have any corrections, this is the time to speak up. Otherwise, I'll take a motion for approval.
Move to approve the minutes.
Second.
Motion and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. Okay. Approval of the agenda. Are there any corrections to the agenda? Any items to be removed?
Move to approve.
Second.
Thanks. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Consent agenda.
Morning, Commissioners. Jason Thonison, Assistant Planning Director. Following items have been placed on the consent agenda for action to be taken on all items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda by any planning commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration. Findings of this planning commission on certain items from this agenda are recommendations to the Pennington County Board of Commissioners, who will make the final decision. Agenda item number four is conditional use permit review 14-29 for Isaac Malsum to review the use of an existing private airstrip to be used for the applicant's personal aircraft. And staff recommends approval of conditional use permit review 14-29 with conditions. Agenda item number five is conditional use permit review 18-40 for Eli Rudolph Investments to review an accessory structure prior to your principal structure on the subject property. Staff recommends to end conditional use permit 18-40 with the applicant's requirements. Agenda item number six is conditional use permit review 22-12 for Alicia and Peter Cole to review a detached garage to be used as a guest house on the subject property. And staff recommends approval of conditional use permit review 22-12. Agenda item number seven is conditional use permit review 22-26 from Tubair Racing LLC, Larry Tuber, to review an accessory structure as a primary structure on the subject property. And staff recommends approval of conditional use permit review 22-26 with conditions. And lastly, agenda item number eight is conditional use permit review 22-40 for the scenic volunteer fire department to review a fire station on the subject property. And staff recommends approval of conditional use permit review 22-40 with conditions.
Are there any items you want removed from the consent agenda?
Yes, staff would like to remove agenda item number four and number eight. There were some issues with the conversion from Word to PDF, so I think some of the information was not included in your packets.
Are there any items that the board wishes removed from consent agenda? I would ask for a motion to approve consent agenda items five, six, and seven.
So move.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Item number four.
As Jason said, there was an error when converting to PDF on this agenda item, which caused the table with the approved conditions to be removed, and the correct tables will be posted in the packet online.
Are there any questions for Megan? I think that was pretty obvious, looking at the agenda packet, that we were missing a little bit of something, so thank you for that.
Move to continue. Consent agenda item number four.
It doesn't need to be continued if you're comfortable with it. We just need, or the table will be posted in its correct form in the minutes once this is done.
That was the recommendation to approve with the new.
It's.
That be my motion?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Item number four. And then item number eight, same thing, the part of the table didn't print. Correct?
Correct.
And the recommendation is to approve?
That is correct.
Okay. Any discussion by the board?
I'll move to approve with the updated table.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. Okay. Item number nine, conditional use permit.
Megan Talmage, planner. Agenda item number nine is conditional use permit CU 23-39, and it is to allow shop building on the subject property to store commercial equipment. The applicant and owner is 605 Xcating, and the agent is Trent Michelson. This property is located at the corner of Ashland Puckett Drive. It is .51 acres, and it is currently in suburban residential district. There is no flood hazard on the property. Staff recommends to deny conditional use permit CU 23-29 as an accessory structure. Would have a commercial use in a residential district. The zoning ordinance lists seven criteria that the planning commission may consider in their review of the conditional use permit applications. They are listed on the screen. Condition number two, will the established maintenance or operation of the conditional use in any foreseeable manner substantial impair or diminish the uses, values, enjoyment of other property in the neighborhood for purposes already permitted? And this will be an accessory structure with a commercial use in a residential zoning district, which generally have a negative impact when located in residential districts. Number six and number seven, the property is currently zoned suburban residential and the future land use is suburban residential, so it does not align with the current zoning ordinance, and it does not align with our comprehensive plan.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Sorry. And otherwise, their utilities are in place, including access and Setback, which is Rapid City's one-mile jurisdiction. But again, staff recommends denial of conditional use permit CU 23-39 as an accessory structure. Would have a commercial use in a residential zoning district.
Other questions for Megan?
I have one. The property next door, looking at the satellite photo, is that their house by chance? I mean, do they live right in the immediate area?
The, I would need to get the applicant or agent up to answer that question, but I believe that's a business. I could be wrong about that, though.
I live right next door.
So you want to come up and introduce yourself and answer that?
Hello, I'm Stuart Martin, and I'm one of three owners of 605 Xcating, and I do live right next door.
Are there any other commercial buildings or businesses in the area?
As far as I'm aware, there's one behind me and one down the road off Ashland.
Are they advertised commercial? Do they have signage or anything like that?
No.
No? Okay.
Mrs. Chair.
Yes.
Sir.
Yes.
How big is the structure that you're considering building?
64 by 50.
Okay. And post frame?
Yes.
And the primary use would be?
Just storing our parts and pieces and some equipment for.
So instead of calling it a shop, could you call it a garage? I've seen garage as bigger than that.
Yeah. Yeah, my garage right next door is bigger than that.
So that takes some of the sting out for me, because just looking at, I haven't been out there personally, but looking at that GIS map, it looks like that, although it's a residential neighborhood, it looks like it's got a commercial.
It does, your honor, and honestly, it would dress the neighborhood up, having another nice building up there.
Have you had any complaints relative to what you're trying to do?
No, sir.
Okay.
We do have a speaker request for this form, but we'll get to that in a minute. Kevin, you had a question?
Yeah. Do you currently have equipment parked outside in that lot?
Yes.
The lot is pretty much filled with your equipment, and most of that would end up inside this new structure?
At times when it needs repaired, yes, sir. But there'd probably always be a skid steer, maybe a loader.
Good. Thank you.
Any other questions for the planner? Okay. I have a, Catherine Jackson has a request to speak.
Hello, I'm Catherine Jackson. I live behind this property. And when they put up the second house, the 4880, when they put up that one, it blocks my view now of the mountains, obviously. And if they put up this new structure, it will take up the other portion from my view out my back door.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
I have a question. So at this point, the only reason you really don't want this is because of the view, not because of the commercial value?
Well, I mean, it is a residential area, so, yeah.
I was just curious. Okay.
But mine is, you know, like my property value later, so.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thanks.
I drove out there and looked. It's not a typical residential area. It is, it does look like there's commercial buildings and things out there. I guess I don't necessarily have a suggestion. I thought if you were going to park as much of your equipment inside as you could, it might improve it, but if you're not going to do that.
No, and most of our equipment's out on job sites.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion from the commission?
I have one question for Megan. So if we were, say, to okay this, do we have to okay anything else as far as the access, shared access and all that? Or are we in place if we decide to do this?
If you were to want to recommend approval, I would actually recommend continuance so that I can write conditions, and then we would come back in two weeks.
Go ahead and make a motion, Mrs. Chair, that we continue this, and as such, until we got the conditions that would go along with this if we went ahead and approved it.
Okay.
So do we want to set that continuance for the next meeting? Is that going to be enough time?
Yes.
Okay.
That would be my motion.
The motion is to continue till the next meeting, which is what date?
January 22nd.
Second.
Motion and second. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. Thank you.
I was an aye. I didn't get it out.
No, that's fine.
Item number 10.
Madam Chair, I would make a motion that we discuss 10, 11, 12, and 13 as one, but vote on them separately, if that's permissible.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Thank you.
Morning again, Commissioners. Jason Thonison, Assistant Planning Director. Agenda item number 10 is major planned unit development amendment 23-12. Agenda item 11 is comprehensive plan amendment 23-13. Agenda item number 12 is rezone 23-18. And agenda item number 13 is vacation of plat 23-05. So all of these have to do with the same property. First request is to amend the planned unit development to remove the subject property from the existing planned unit development. That portion of property is one acre, you can see on the screen here, is going to be proposed, Lot 3. It is currently planned unit development district, existing land use and specialty resort. Access is off Robbins Roost Road, and there's no special flood hazard area on the property. Some property history, the Board of Commissioners approved major planned unit development amendment 21-19 in February of 2022. Proposed lot, like I said, Lot 3 will be one acre. The remaining balance of 2.41 acres will be in Lot 1R. Request was sent out for interdepartmental review. Both approaches were permitted by county highway, and there were no other objections or concerns received. Again, proposed Lot 3 will be removed from the PUD. That's the reason for the rezone in the comprehensive plan amendment. Future land use does show it as planned unit development. The request is going to be to rezone that to low-density residential district and change the comprehensive plan in the same. Vacation of plat. So this, it's a little difficult to see here on the screen, but this platted easement will be removed. Earlier this year, the applicant and the neighbor on Lot 2 did come to an agreement and plat, or filed an easement with the Register of Deeds to provide access to Lot 2. So this one is no longer necessary, and they're requesting to vacate that. And I believe that should sum it up.
Okay. Questions for Jason?
I have a question. Jason, we're going towards low-density residential in this.
Correct.
There's no other low-density residential in the area, is there?
It's a relatively new zoning district, so there aren't a lot of low-density residential anywhere in the county. Let me bring that up. I'll show you the map here. So this is a map of the surrounding properties within a half mile. You can see there are suburban residential districts within that, which are more restrictive than low-density residential, as far as lot size goes.
So what he's trying to do, basically, you have to do low residential.
That would be the appropriate zoning district for what he's proposing. There will be a fourplex located on that. I'll talk more about that in the plat, but his intent is to plat off that one-acre portion with multifamily dwelling on it, and then sell that property off.
Well, I know the fourplex that's there now is rented to individuals. I realize that. That's why I was just curious, what we were, you know, why we had to change that, but anyhow.
So again, here's the easement that's going to be vacated, or that he's proposing to vacate. And again, this is the new easement that is currently on the property as well.
Are there any other questions on this item?
No, Ms. Chair. Jason, how long since this gentleman owned the property?
That's a good question.
So when he bought it, I think it was an established rental business, Robbins Roost. I don't know if it's still called Robbins Roost, but.
It is.
Over the years, I know that he's been doing certain improvements, and now this is just another extension of those previous improvements.
Correct.
If I understand it.
Any other questions? Okay. Item number 10, we'll vote on that first. Major planned unit development amendment PU 23-12.
I would make a motion to approve major planned unit development amendment PU 23-12.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Item number 11 here. Comprehensive plan amendment CA 23-13 to change the future land use from planned unit development district to low-density residential district. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Vacation of plat? This vacates the existing 30-foot-wide access easement on the plat?
Ms. Chair, I think we got to do number 12 first.
Oh, did I skip one?
Yes.
All right. We'll do number 12 first, with the rezone. RZ 23-18 to rezone from a planned unit development district to low-density residential district. Do I have a motion?
I'm moved. Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. All right. How about 13 now? This is the vacation of plat, VP 23-05 to vacate the easement.
Move to approve.
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. Okay. And then number 14, we need to discuss that, correct? Or was that included?
No, it's not included.
It's not included.
Okay.
So agenda item number 14 is preliminary plan 23-31 to create Lot 1R and Lot 3 of Boyham subdivision. Again, the applicant is Quality 5 LLC. Matt Keniston is the agent. KTM is their surveyor. Location of the property is 12630 Robbins Roost Road. And the applicant is proposing a one-acre lot and a 2.41-acre lot. Request was sent out for interdepartmental review. Department of Equalization stated that they will need to have a surveyed plat and a mastered read-on-file with the Register of Deeds for the condo units that they're proposing. Register of Deeds also stated that the finding plat needs to have county certificates, not the city's. Those are included as conditions of approval. The applicant's request appears to be in harmony with existing lots and current land uses in the area, and what that staff recommends approval with conditions.
Questions for Jason?
I will make a motion, Ms. Chair.
Second.
Thank you.
Approve to, go ahead and make the motion to approve preliminary plan BPL 23-31, and I just want to say that I'd like to thank KTM for their professionalism for putting these exhibits together in the manner that they did.
Any more discussion on this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. County Board report.
Honestly, you'll notice if you reviewed that there is a significant monetary drop from 2022 to 2023 that had to do with the new Underwood Solar Farm. It was significant. We did end up with 20 more building permits for the month of January than we did versus 2022, and that also put us 20 up on the year from 2022. Pending any questions, that's all I have for the county board report.
Thank you. Items from the public? Come on up. Introduce yourself.
Hi, my name is Jeannie Bush. I'm a member of the Pennington County Bor, or community. What I would like to make you aware of is the traffic changes in our neighborhood due to three vacation home rentals. On all three of the cups, it says that most likely there will be no change in traffic. And so for, from May to October, I did not a comprehensive look at all of the traffic in our neighborhood, but just a snippet of it. And it turned into a lot more than what I even imagined. And if you would go up on the screen, it will show you my neighborhood. We have 15 homes in our neighborhood, and three of them right now are vacation home rentals. And if we could see the map, that's.
Jason, could you do that?
Do you want me to do that?
Yeah.
Okay. This is our neighborhood. We enter off of Rochford Road. It's a single gravel road that goes into our neighborhood. And if you'll know, if you'll see that Deer Meadow Drive is in a deeper color, and then Whitetail Road is mismarked. Whitetail Road only goes on that dashed line east and west, and Deer Meadow Drive continues going, going north and south. So that's a mismark on the map. And so the vacation home rentals that are in our neighborhood are the Hamill, Chambers, and Dressler ones. And at the T intersection just last night, the one on the corner that's just north of Chambers went up for sale also. And most likely, it'll be another vacation home rental, so now we'll have four out of 15 that are in our neighborhood. And what we've experienced on a single gravel road is because of the vacation home rentals, they each have, one has two garages, one has three garages, and one has three garages plus another tuck-under. And it's a great attraction for UTVs, motorcycles, bike, a lot of tandem trailers coming in, big rigs. Our road wasn't meant for that. We don't, we don't have any recourse for it. They pay the same amount of taxes as if it was a residential area. And so the number of feet among these three is only 674 feet, with three vacation home rentals in this tight neighborhood, where we used to have just single residential families. As you can imagine, when I asked about what's the criteria on all of these cups, it was noted, let me look at the verbiage of it. It was noted that there would be no significant change in the traffic. And when I contacted the Pennington County Planning and Zoning per Megan Talmage, who said, per the state's attorney, that in order to find out what the criteria is as far as changing traffic in my area, I would have to file a request for that information and pay $25 an hour to find out what the criteria of the board is that says that the traffic won't be changed in my neighborhood. I'm kind of puzzled why I have to pay to find out what that criteria is. But if you need documentation of that conversation with Megan, I can provide that, the emails that we exchanged. But again, this was, this neighborhood was established in the 1990s. We have covenants, but the covenants are not respected under the vacation home rental approvals, cups, and that. And now, it was just, it had gutted me last night to see this next home go up for sale. So now we'll have four. I can't imagine that it won't be a vacation home rental, because it is advertised as a two-bedroom with the potential of sleeping 10, because they have Murphy beds. They have a three-stall car garage where one is turned into four bunk beds, and another that's a office. But, I mean, that's just the new information from last night. We have, if I could, I know that Jason said you guys don't want to see a whole bunch of photos, but if you would just stop me in, if you see anything, it has changed our neighborhood greatly. I used to walk, or I still do walk in this neighborhood daily, usually twice a day. And the people coming, come like a bat out of hell, and now I wear an orange vest just to walk in my own neighborhood, because they come around and don't pay attention. They're looking for where they're renting, where they're, whatever they're looking for. I can't. I can't allow my grandkids to ride their bikes anymore, because you've got three big units that are coming in and out all the time. Some of these take their UTVs off their trailers and go from wherever they want. Some come down to our property thinking, even though there's no no outlets, it's a one road in, one road out. They come down to our property looking how to get to a fast way to the US Forest Service. And we have repeatedly had trespassers, but we've talked to the sheriff, and the sheriff says, nah, that's not really what we're meant to be. Do a complaint, but nobody really cares. So we have dirt bikes coming in and out. At this particular photo, there were six of them coming out of the Hamill property, in and out all day long. Multiple trailers, big trailers. This guy happens to be the person that cleans the hot tubs. None of the permanent residents have hot tubs and cleaning people, but all three of the vacation home rental have both, and none of them use the same people, because you can't do a fast enough turnaround. So you've got that additional traffic too. Then you've got the big UTVs, you've got the trailers and the UTVs coming out, you've got other big trailers coming. You've got big tandem trailers, covered trailers that come in and out. Sometimes you just have a car, but then again, you have more tandem trailers. Sometimes, even though they're rented, the, these are all for six people only, most of the time, there's four to five cars, which means that they're probably over their amount. But that's not, that's not our job. We just, we just deal with the traffic and the people that trespass, because they're coming and looking for short ways to come in and out. And then, yeah, there's been times when they come in with not only trailers, but other sleeping arrangements. And there have been times when there's the big crawlers, I'm not sure what the real name for those are, I didn't get a picture of those. Again, this isn't a comprehensive, this is just what I experienced when I'm walking. And this has changed our neighborhood greatly. And of course, during Sturgis, one, well, there's all, all of them had many bikes. And that again is all coming in and out of a single road, and a family, used to be a family neighborhood. And so this is what, this is what I want to make you aware of. It's very disconcerting, because it's not, it's not a residence anymore, and now with most likely another one coming up, that's going to be another vacation home rental. We have, we need help. What do we do? What do we do as the permanent neighbors in the neighborhood? What represents us?
How can you help us?
You say you have covenants?
Yeah, we do.
Probably, do they restrict vacation home rentals, or?
We had the original person that wrote, or that, you know, developed our, we had her do a notarized copy, which we gave to you with each one of the cup applications, and it didn't matter.
Unfortunately, we don't enforce covenants, but you can do that through the courts. I know it's not a cheap process, but if this next one comes up for a vacation home rental, you can oppose it.
Yeah, we can. And we have, we have spent so much time and energy, and we, on the very first one, Dressler's, we did go get lawyers and that, and each one of us, well, Dressler was in the 90s yet, when we were opposing it, the very first one. And we got nowhere, and we each spent thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars. And, but I guess my question is, is that we want to be represented too. We understand the right of using your land the way you wish.
Ms. Chair.
Go ahead.
Say, ma'am, what's the name of that subdivision that you live in?
This is called Alpine Acres.
Okay.
Off of Rochford Road.
Because we've had other folks that live in there, maybe on the other side of the Rochford Road, I'm not sure.
They're Lawrence. On the other side of Rochford is Lawrence County.
But the subdivision I'm talking about was about 22 lots. They never had one vacation home rental in there. One came in, the entire neighborhood showed up here, with the exception of a couple of folks, totally against it. Said, this is not what we want in the neighborhood. And as the commissioner, I thought, you know, that, why don't we listen to them? Well, unfortunately, there's, the way that ordinance 319 is written, those 23 people or 22 people that came here that day, their voice was not heard, just because of the way it's written. I think sometime in January, and Jason can confirm this, the Commissioners are going to have a special planning meeting, Jason, is that correct? And I think the public's invited to that, is that correct? Okay, so can you let this lady know when that meeting is going to be? Because this would be a good opportunity for you to come in front of the other Commissioners to express your concerns. One of the things I would like you to do in the interim is take ordinance 319, read it, and I think the category that you're looking at is density. Just give us your idea, what we could do to control density. My idea in the past was nobody, if a certain percentage of neighbors said they did not want a vacation home rental or nightly rental within so many feet of their residence, that they'd have some skin in the game, they could, they could, we have to, I don't know how to address density, it's very complex, but I would appreciate your input on that.
Our neighborhood has come every single time there's been a cop brought up, and we have opposed. When Dressler did his, the entire neighborhood came. When Hamill's came, we had about, I think we only had three. And when Chambers came, I think we only had two. The neighborhood has
Given up.
Yeah, given up.
Right now, I think the criteria, if they meet the criteria, and the lot's over an acre, I mean, we could change it. You're pretty much rubber stamp to have a nightly rental. I mean, unfortunately, I don't know that I agree with that, but that's the way it is. And if we have to change it, we have to
But look at what it's done to, a stable neighborhood is no longer a stable neighborhood.
I totally agree, I totally agree.
And our one, our one-lane gravel road is not meant to handle tandem trailers, let alone multiple tandem trailers in and out all the time. And then, as far as safety is concerned, we look at, community policing says a stable neighborhood is a safe neighborhood. We know, we know none of these people. And when I put this together, my neighbors, when we were looking at it, they went, boy, you know, that white car might be Mike Dressler's, it might be, but I said, there's the point. We don't know. We don't know if that's his car, we don't know whose car it is. And then when people come on our property, we're at the very end. We get the traffic looking to get to the forest without going to a trailhead. And we tell them, we've got six signs, we have a gate entering into our property, we have six signs that say, no outlet, no trespassing, video surveillance, the sheriff will be called.
Well, we didn't know how to turn around.
I would suggest that you, you put your suggestions down, get them to Jason, or get them to me. I'd like to have them before this meeting, so that this can be discussed. I mean, that's the step, that's one step that we can take. The other step is, I don't know what your covenants say, but I can, I've been through this with other exclusive subdivisions, where there was never no intention of any commercial activity, and the covenants strictly said no commercial activity, they don't recognize a nightly rental as commercial. So there was an attorney involved in this subdivision, and they modified the covenants. To do that, you have to have a certain percentage of the landowners buy into that, but if you can do that, the wording that you want, and they just added one sentence, no nightly rentals, and that, then it becomes a civil matter, and then, of course, as the commission or the planning commission, we have no jurisdiction over that. Then I would, but the covenants does have teeth, and if you took up the court, I would assume that there'd be a solution found in that. But I'm more unhappy to look at your suggestions and bring them in front of this, the other Commissioners, when we have a meeting, and Jason can give you the time and place for that.
Okay, I'd be glad to do that, because everybody else
You can bring your neighbors and whatever.
Yeah. It's hard to rally when you've been beaten down every time you've come.
So anyhow, food for thought.
I'd be interested in knowing what's the meeting about, and you, Ron?
The Commissioners normally meet with planning and zoning a couple times a year, just to kind of touch on the stuff that's pretty sensitive, and vacation home rentals are pretty sensitive. But Jason, can, Jason, can you kind of give the Commission an overview of what that meeting is going to be about?
That could wait till
Sure. Yeah, I don't have the agenda in front of me, but vacation home rentals, staff does want to come in and see guidance from the board. The zoning ordinance amendment that came forward earlier this, late last year for section 319
Yeah, the one that the Commissioners voted down.
Right. We do feel there is value in some of that proposed ordinance amendments, so we'd like to come forward and see guidance from the board as to what pieces that they would like to see in maybe another amendment.
Thank you.
Thanks.
If we just want some help?
Yeah.
I understand.
We did talk about density.
Oh, yeah.
When we were discussing the vacation home rental ordinance, and there was absolutely no way to come to any kind of an agreement on it.
You know, I sat through, I'm the folks that came from Alpine Acres, and I went and took every property, and I tried to figure out, how can we relative the density if a certain percent, or certain percentage of the immediate neighbors voted to say, we got, it's got to be 500 feet something in there. Right now, I think the density is addressed by just saying, a certain percentage in the county, and I say, well then, if you can do 5% of the population, can you just put them all in one neighborhood? I mean, this thing needs to be vetted just a little more carefully, because I don't think we're addressing concerns like yours, where you take a really nice, established neighborhood where you can have coffee with your neighbor, and all of a sudden, you're living, you're surrounded by not what you bought into. And I think there should be something in there to protect people's property rights. I mean, it's a two-way street, but I mean,
It is.
There's got to be some kind of a limit.
And all three of our vacation home rentals are owned by realtors, and they stood before you and said, you know, we're just young, and we can't afford this, and this is our only way we can do our dream. Well, we waited to buy until we could afford it, and they're realtors, it's a real estate investment. And it has taken away, the home, one, the Hamill home, they are from Michigan, and they had $1,000 up. Anybody that bid against them, the realtor had an automatic $1,000 up, no limit. And so they got, the people that sold got a great price for their neighborhood, which then affects us, because our taxes went up $1,000 this year, because they overpriced of the vacation home rentals that sold. It's like, wow, you know, how can you get out of this trifecta? So anyway, thanks for listening.
Absolutely.
I hope it makes a difference.
Thank you.
For driving in.
Items from staff. Building permit report, everybody got a copy of that?
Yep.
And items for membership, anything else? Adjournment?
Motion to adjourn. Do it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Is this the shortest meeting you guys have had?